...to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. First item is the Board of Alderman will hold a public hearing to allow citizens to speak about the special use permit of Q O six north Sibley. Anyone has any comments? If everybody's done.
Do you want me to talk about it?
If you'd like us to know something, yeah, that's cool.
I think I've done it. I think I'm gonna start soon to be done.
Stand up, come up to that saw cut in the floor and tell us your name, where you're from.
My name's Shree Shepard, I'm from Buckner, I grew up here.
Excuse me, can this way so we can hear you?
Okay, my name is Shree Shepard, I'm from Buckner. This is Matt Smith, he's from Sibley. I had a daycare and preschool in Oxford or Resorcer in Grand Valley for nine years. Unfortunately, my landlord at the time lost his businesses and I chose not to buy the building and just waited on the right opportunity to buy one of my own. In the meantime, three beautiful little girls came into our lives, he's one of my very best and best friends, and they kidnapped him as well, and we adopted three girls from this town, and are getting ready to adopt our fourth little girl. And I drove by Old Hartford Church in town and I was like, I would really love to buy that building and do this again because I raised all my children at my other center. And I asked about it and met Pastor Bob and went to the bank and bought myself a church without even thinking and really excited to be back in town because this is where my heart was, this is where my dad sat here a long time ago.
Old man's name?
Jerry Smith. That's my dad.
All right, old man's name.
He's old man.
He actually made good.
So this is what my dad was doing while I was at home, when he rounded up. But I have, I bought the building, been going through the process for like almost seventeen, eighteen months, it's been an absolute nightmare. And nobody is working with the state right now, getting people out, everything has just been a disaster all the way around. So I've basically been living on, working with six children, but God's good, I got to know the families, I got to know my neighbors, I have great people around me, I have great parents, and it's been, the churches, everybody's been so supportive and kind, and I'm just so thankful for that, and I would love to do that. I have that approved for ninety-nine children, I have no intentions of taking ninety-nine, that's a lot, I don't even know if we have ninety-nine kids that need care here, but I know there's a great need in Jackson County for people taking on babies because there's nobody that's open for that, and I will be as soon as this is all finalized. So this is one of the last things we have to do, and I'm just really excited. Another thing, I was talking to a couple of you the other night, another thing I'd like to do in the town is also open up a starting up a home for women, so as soon as this is done, I'm going to buy a house here and hopefully you guys will support me on that, where, because I work in foster care, I do a career of foster children, where we can help women to learn how to take care of themselves. It's not going to be a recovery home, it's going to be a home for women that are just can't afford to live anywhere, just need help to learn how to take care of their families, because that's my next thing after this, if this is all approved and I get that, so I'm sure that's about it. Anything? So, that's kind of what I do.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing at this time. First item of business on the actual meeting is approval of the March second business session minutes. We do have one correction where on the last page it says the general fund said something or did something, but it didn't, and we need to make corrections too.
I will go through.
Okay.
Commander?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, any public comments not related to the recent? Hearing that, we'll move on to committee reports. Admin and Finance, things continue to look pretty good, the general fund, on the outstanding checks is that sixty-two after the thirty thousand of checks, or is that?
Yeah.
So we got about, we got ninety-two currently in the general, ninety-two thousand in the general fund with about thirty thousand in outstanding checks, so about sixty thousand. Overall, we've been, along with continued to stay about a million, even on our funds, quarter thousand of that's in the parks capital improvement, so overall, things are looking pretty good from that standpoint. Public Health and Safety.
Good news or bad news first?
You're dealing with whatever.
Well, I'm a good news and bad news kind of guy, but, all right, bad news first. The computers that we thought were, we were going to put into the vehicles, right, we found in a storage room back here, we found out today, our IT people said, they are about twelve to fourteen years old and they're totally outdated and we are not able to use them in our cars. So we're talking probably one amount, ten, ten to twelve thousand dollars.
Rough number, ten thousand.
Yeah, so, okay. That's the bad news on that part, there is a good, good side of that, though, that point is that we do have a couple of places we're looking at and hopefully if we get it approved, not from the board, but from the state, we will get funds for those, but that's what we're looking at now, okay? That's one issue. Sergeant Turner, this is today, was notified by the Jackson County Court, court has filed several state charges on two, two residents?
Yeah.
Is that right? Two residents on different instances for criminal charges, criminal conduct, basically. So, and the prosecutor that we're working with up there told us, told him that these reports, our reports, look like they came out of Kansas City. I had, believe me, I had nothing to do with it, it was all Sergeant Turner. And the guy is working.
That good to you.
Yeah, he had a good teacher. All right, today we had a call, a total about it, this afternoon, man that we've had issues, that you all have had issues with here in the past, threatened to kill two of the officers and, and his parents, elderly parents. We got them out of the house and we got them to safety, basically, and they are okay as we speak. The guy, we just, we decided, because he wanted to do suicide by cop, and bottom line is, if we had gone in and got him, we would have had to possibly have a shooting, so we just avoided that. So, Oak Grove, or not Oak Grove, but.
Great Valley.
Great Valley came out and assisted us with that, so IPD was on standby, just in case it came very, very hot, basically. So.
Is he still on the residence?
Do what?
Is he still on the residence?
Yes, yep, yep, and we had no charters to take him out, so there's nothing we could do but take him out. We did contact our, what do we call it, mental.
Comprehensive mental health.
Comprehensive mental health people, and they're going to see what they can do to give us some type of either ninety-six hour hold on the, on the guy, but bottom line is, usually PRC psychiatric research or holding area, they're in, we said that they'll only hold him for, our center point will only hold him for maybe two days at most, you know, so he'll be back. Bottom line is, I found out that the city has had issues with this subject for some time, so hopefully we can give some mental health as a help, as opposed to having to use physical force on it, so. One other issue, I, I don't follow Facebook, I don't follow the social media about Buckner. I found out today, apparently some citizens have complained about police officers being at Misty's, Misty's, and leaving their car running. There's a reason why we do that, because in the Chevy Tahoe, if he turns it off when he's out, it takes usually about ten minutes to reboot everything back up. What that means is, if we needed, or if he needed, any of the equipment in that Chevy Tahoe while it's rebooting, we can't get to it. So, that's, that's the reason, just that why I agree with you all, because I figured somebody would intend to bring it up, that's why we leave that car on all the time, if it's out there, when it's here, we don't. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Park Board?
We're just getting ready for the Easter event on April second, about it right now.
Any update on design or?
We have a phone conference tomorrow morning on that, so that'll be the start of it.
Cool. You think we'll have something for kids to use this summer or?
We hope so, we'll try to know a little bit more tomorrow.
Makes sense.
But, yeah, we really would like that this year.
Be great. Congratulations, you graduated, close to a major milestone there, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Planning a zoning? Public Works?
Yes, sir, I found out yesterday from MoDOT themselves, that they will be opening twenty-four highway, all, all lanes, next, starting next week, they're gonna come out and take everything down, and we're gonna have four lanes through town. Also, in a few weeks, we were on our agenda to do potholes on the Tuesdays and Thursdays until we get them caught up. Took the lawnmowers over, got everything ready for, you know, when we start to mow grass, so we're not behind, we're actually ahead, and I like being that way because you never know what's gonna happen, that's all I have.
I think, and I apologize because I haven't been back that way lately, but that sign right by the bridge, you're coming in town to speed them, and sign where it says a twenty-five except where posted, but there used to be like a thirty-five on there.
Yeah, exactly, MoDOT is supposed to be putting a new one up because it's their whole, they said.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens.
You could see where one was missing, but then the next one, I think you go up to is still thirty-five, so it's like, it almost looks like twenty-five and then thirty-five.
I got you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jenny, on the, speaking of MoDOT, the central at twenty-four is in bad shape. In fact, it wasn't even MoDOT that fixed it, it was a citizen, so that has not been resolved since forever.
Yeah, neither is Blackberry Tardsford twenty-four.
Yeah, so I don't know if we can get on the horn, we have filed complaints every day, but I think that's where we need to be at this point.
Twenty-four and Johnson, same one, they got that easement there, should get them off the highway, in the case of it's all.
There's your customers? Okay, next, the old business. Bill number twenty-three oh five, ordinance number ten eighty-one, and ordinance to amend the zoning code of the city of Buckner, Missouri. This is to do with the one oh six north Hudson. Is this, is this our second reading?
Yep, this is the second.
Okay. So this is second reading by title.
Any motion to just go call it now?
So this is on the property you talked about a couple of weeks ago, I've heard nothing to conflict with what we had the other.
Yes, it's.
No, because we already voted for it, so we just need a motion to approve and.
We'll go through.
Second.
On the Jones?
Aye.
On the Ross?
Aye.
On the Woodcock?
Aye.
On the Doris?
Aye.
Next up, bill number twenty-three oh six, ordinance number ten eighty-two, and ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a childcare facility in our one single-family zone, and we heard earlier during the hearing. Second. Do we need to?
Yeah, we need to second.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, splitting the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? I only heard one aye. All right, second reading, bill number twenty-three oh six, ordinance number ten eighty-two, and ordinance approving a special use permit to operate this childcare facility in an R one single-family zone.
Will you approve?
Second.
Okay, on the Jones?
Aye.
On the Ross?
Aye.
On the Woodcock?
Aye.
On the Doris?
Aye.
You're approved, so.
You're in bid.
I've signed your license, so you're ready to go. Next item, we were in a discussion with the IT, but the IT folks, because of concerns with the weather, asked that we please reschedule, so we'll put that on the agenda for next time. And I will ask, Joe, before we do next, can they, I was having trouble following the bid, if they could put together what the pricing options are for the various versions?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make sure to do that.
Also, I was talking to Darryl about that, not all of us have different expertise, this is not one of them.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could put some of that into your language on what you're using it for, and how much, and how it's gonna help us, or if it's just gonna be the same, or a little more, because I, I mean, I could read that ten times and get ten different.
Well, that's, they must do your whole presentation, probably with these ten fifteen presentations, go over all the options, what's going on, like I said.
Different between new functionality being added, if they could mark that this is something we don't currently have, or.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, discussion, consideration of possible acts regarding a permit for fireworks stand.
Couple times.
Crackle, where's Pop?
Over there.
It's not Pop, it's Boom, brother.
Sure, absolutely, Boom, yes. We're, we're stuck handling firework, we're, we've been thirty-two south Sibley for the last few years, we're requesting a permit to go back in that location, so that's why we're here. Most will approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like your business.
Hey, uh.
Next up, what are the crucial comments?
This is maybe more to Officer Turner, so I know that you guys are aware of a particular individual, J D, that's been running around town, keeping everybody kind of up in their awareness, I'm wondering, it seems like we keep arresting him and taking him out of town, but he's ending up back here, I'm afraid somebody's gonna get killed because everybody's on high alert with this guy now. I mean, he shut down the school the other day because of.
Right.
One of the crises he was in.
We had.
He's mentally ill, he's homeless, and people keep bringing him back here and he's not getting help, like, it's, we're going in circles, I'm afraid he's either gonna hurt somebody or be killed, and I don't know, is there an answer for how to get him something before something happens?
Is, I'm gonna let Turner talk about that, he knows, he's talked to the family, the, his family wants nothing to do with him.
And they're out of state, is that right?
Most of them are out of state, there is sister, is it sister?
Sister, local but not in Buckner.
Right, and, and you all may know more about, yeah, I got, the one, the last day we put him in detention in Blue Springs, is this week?
Yes.
Monday, Monday. We called the judge, our judge, and talked to him and convinced him, like you said, the same thing, and he agreed, okay, he said, I'll give you a permission to hold him, because all we had was trespassing, and, but, hold him for up to seven days, and guess what, today we called, the judge called back and said, guess what, we can't hold him any longer, period. So he's out, he's out again, last, last known whereabouts, he's in Blue Springs somewhere, okay? But if you all have not seen the video, KCI Airport Police had a negative interaction with this guy, maybe what, two weeks ago, two or just three weeks ago? Yeah, if you haven't seen it, it's on Facebook, and they ended up fighting to get him in custody. At that time, he was driving and we knew that he was getting around because he was using a pickup truck, and we don't know where he got it or how he got it, somebody apparently fell.
Well, he had intentions of picking up a young woman and her child.
Yes, at the, at the airport.
His behaviors were escalating.
Anybody not see that?
I didn't.
Okay, when you get home tonight, you go on Facebook, just pull up, Airport Police have negative interaction with Buckner individuals. Anyway, they ended up fighting him and putting him in detention there for a couple of days. Matt, they transported him down to Joplin, or somewhere, holding, wherever they hold their people.
From KCI, he was transported to Kansas City's holding facility, and then from there he went to, I guess they hold like overflow people in Burnham County, so he ended up down there.
Down south, but in answer to your question, though, we, Jackson County Mental Health do not want to do anything with him or will not unless the family gets involved. We, the police, if we have a complaint on him at one certain time, we can, we can address that at that time, but what we're talking about is trespassing charges, which is, I think it's fifty dollar fine, hundred dollars at the most, and the judge, like I say, we convinced Judge Legosso to, to hold him, to put a hold on him in Johnson County, so he was gonna be out of our hair for, for at least a week, and he called us today and said, we'll get him, get him, put him back out on the street.
Why, do you know why that was the case with the judge?
He found out it was illegal to do.
Is ninety-six hours the top on that?
The ninety-six hour hold is, is through the Comprehensive Mental Health Association.
And he didn't qualify for that even, he didn't qualify for the psych because?
The threat to himself or others?
They held him, and we put him in there before committee, to see if he'd do that, he's either gonna threaten somebody face to face firmly, or threaten to kill himself or do bodily harm to himself, and not always does he do that, so that's what we're dealing with.
Right.
And it's, it's, it's an, I'm sure probably almost everybody here has heard about it, but doggone it, it's.
I'm just afraid somebody's gonna get hurt, whether it's.
Yeah.
I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Well, we, we keep track of him when he's, when he's here, but that doesn't mean, I mean, Independence knows about him, Blue Springs hasn't dealt with him, where else?
Is he willing to go to a mental health facility to get treated?
Absolutely not. Doesn't want to be helpless.
They, they offer help for him to use the police help.
Right, well, I don't understand if you were at the airport committing a crime, how that's not a federal offense.
Who is that, who, what police department handled that?
KCI. Yeah, go ahead.
I have something to say, we both work with children that are very, escalate very quickly, they've been in the hospital continuously, we've been doing this for several years with Paris, and I unfortunately just found out who this young man was, and he was a child, one of my dear friends, and I was with her when she died, this is devastating, I have no idea who this, to me, he's a void still.
True.
And we kind of failed him, we failed our children with our mental health in this country, we don't get some help when they're little, and he is a grown man, as big as most of us, and he's out, but what I understand, which could or could not be true, he might be escalating because of his mental health and drugs. I did make a phone call, I know you guys don't know, I do take initiative to do things, I did make a phone call to a friend of mine, pastor Wallo on Square, he does, he has two recovery homes.
For any of the people?
On Indian Square, because he needs, this man obviously needs housing, but he does need his mental health, if he can go in and get his mental health checked and get that under control, I mean, he needs meds, he can be housed somewhere, so we can get him out of this town and get some help. I mean, I know his mother is not alive and she can't help him, and his sister and brother have been in his life since she passed, I mean, they can't, he's, he belongs to this town, I mean, we didn't take him as a boy as a child, I mean, whatever was when I wasn't there after she died, but it's sad, it's happened, it happened to any of our families, any of our children, I've got a hospital and we've got, we've got three that have mental illnesses in our home, and they escalate quick and they hurt us continuously, unbruised constantly, and that man is a danger, and nobody called me to tell me, as Tracy Eagle called me and told me on the back end, and then he called me and said, he's coming around the corner, he was hitting at the semi going down B E, and I was looking out my window and my babies were all behind me, nobody let me know that he was around, he could have walked right, well, he couldn't have walked in the building, but he could have knocked the window out, he's a big man and he's escalating on drugs, my girls can break windows.
Sure, anybody.
Please let me know if he is out, running around escalated, let us know, my girls and boys know, so, but I will, I, I can give you a number to a place that he can go, it is hard to get a bed, we spend, when we pick our girls in, we spend at least twenty-four hours there waiting usually.
They're what?
We usually spend at least twenty-four hours sitting and waiting to sign our children in when they need to go to the hospital, it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare for children, I can imagine trying to force them to do it.
If you can get, if he will volunteer to go by ambulance to the hospital to get help, then it can be court ordered, affidavit to, because he wouldn't be in his right mind when he was doing it anyway.
Right.
They would evaluate him and realize that he does need the help, that he can't think for himself, so they would force the affidavit, then he would have to go get help.
So he has to sit with him, like in the room outside of him?
A lot of patients that are at about like.
I think you should also realize, he is not a threat for hurting anybody known this time.
Right.
The biggest thing he has had is trespassing, because he's went where he's not wanting, don't think that he is out hurting people and doing things that he's not, you have picked him up on stealing.
Nope.
You have picked him up on assault.
You're right.
You have picked him up for trespassing, and you do not want to mislabel this guy as a threat, I'm not saying he can't snack, but I'm saying he's thirty, he's thirty-six years old and he has never snacked, he's not had that on his record, he has some domestic stuff on him, but he has not hurt people, he's not that kind of a person.
Yeah.
To this day, is that, officers, is that, what can you, I know you can't speak about some of the things, but he has not been a person that's went around hurting people on his side, has he been hurt somebody, really?
Sure, since, since I've been here, and I'm looking at you guys, no, he has not, you know, assaulted anybody or, you know, anything crazy like that, you guys had a couple instances, like we said, domestic issues, there are some other things on his records that, you know, I can't.
But he doesn't go around hurting people, that's not his M O.
And he was mentally evaluated.
It was two weeks ago, when I had said to let him go, he went for a ninety-six hour hold, they released him because he was not insane, he was not mentally unstable by Truman's standards.
Standards.
And they released him, that's why he was back in this town again, he has done. He has done things that you and I would not do, but he has not hurt people and he's not a threat to these kids and these people like these people are leading on about.
Yeah, and what Tony's talking about too is, and he'll go with us voluntarily.
He does not fight you.
Yeah.
He, the two officers that arrested him Monday, he could have walked away from them. There's nothing short of chasing him or shooting, there's nothing they could have done, because he could have walked away from that.
Yeah.
I think the issue is, it's getting perpetuated on Facebook.
Yes.
So now everybody, everybody's freaking out now.
Yes.
I just, I don't want to see...
People have been this way.
Right.
And just because he's walking down the road singing to this song loudly, that's not, does not mean, he is yelling at cars driving by, he is singing to this song. And I'm sorry for taking up time, but I want people to understand, this guy's not out hurting people and I want these officers to...
No, I agree with you.
You know, agree, I mean, if it's true, to agree with that, you know?
There's a whole bunch of them.
We got a bad person that's out here hurting people.
There's a whole bunch of them singing themselves up and down point four.
Yes, he has stayed with me many times. I have helped him and advocated for him, he needs mental help.
Well, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
I appreciate your comment.
Mayor, this is a daily issue that we, we get calls every day, every day, and you're right.
And people are scared, and they have a right to be scared, but they also should be informed because with information, fear will subside.
Right. Yeah, to my knowledge, he's not assaulted anybody here in this town.
Yeah, not since I've been here.
I mean, it's... We've, we've, the first time I dealt with him was at the restaurant one day with you. He was helping you out and didn't have any problems and had not had any problems.
He's very respectful.
His delusions?
You watched the video of that?
He's, he's, he's trying to take her.
And he never tried to take her, he offered her a ride. He said, "I'm your driver, I'm here to pick you up." He never went up to her, he never touched her, he never did anything. But that's...
And how he...
Yes, it was weird.
We, we don't know how he ended up there at the airport, but KCI police got involved and courts, they tried to take him into custody and then he refused. But yeah, he's, he's, as of, as of right now, he's backed out either Blue Springs or on his way back here.
Thank you.
He'll be here if he's out, because that's all he knows.
Yes, yep.
There's no more like officials comments, I would take the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.